City Council meeting is ordered. I would invite everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's move you down.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd have a roll call, please, Phyllis.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wylie Stewart.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our September 5th meeting. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve our minutes from September 5th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. We have an event forum from the Cherry Lane block. Oh, do I have to do that first? I have to go by. This is a public hearing. Sorry, Brad, you've got to be second. Because it's on the schedule for a certain time, a public hearing, I need to do this first. So, first thing I need to do is close the council meeting and--
Suspend it, not close it. I'll make a motion to suspend the council meeting.
Second. A motion and a second to suspend the council meeting so we can have a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Now I need a motion to--
Make a motion to hold a public meeting for the purpose of--
Tax abatement for ABC Cinema.
Tax abatement for ABC Cinema. Thank you.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Help me out here, Phyllis. Do I need to make this--
This is a proof of notice that all the taxing units have been notified of this tax abatement.
Okay.
So we just need to make it matter of record plus this hearing has been published in the newspaper.
Right.
So we need to make this matter of record.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to verify all this has been made notice to the public and published in the newspaper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Okay, so what do we do next?
Okay.
Confirming resolution.
The purpose of the public hearing is to seek out any public comment regarding the granting of a tax abatement. Declaratory resolution was passed at the past meeting that granted a five-year abatement for real estate improvements as well as for personal property that will be used in connection with the new theater complex that is being constructed and put into place by Corey and Barb Abholder. So ABC, ABC Cinema Inc. is the applicant, and at this time certainly open it up for any additional comments on behalf of the applicant by either Corey and Barb or Trevor or Audra, but it's primarily designed to seek any public comment for or against the proposed abatement. So at this time, the floor is open to anybody that wishes to speak in either direction. It appears that there are no public comments to be received, so at this point, you can move to close a public hearing, and then, once we get back into the regular meeting, the confirming resolution will be introduced and acted upon by council if you're so inclined.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion. Second. And a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to reopen our city council meeting to--
Is it reopening? We didn't close it, so--
Well--
Re- re-
Re- re-
Thank you.
Yes.
Have a motion and have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. So now we're ready for the confirming resolution.
Number thirteen.
Thirteen.
Number two thousand seventeen dash thirteen. If I could get a motion to introduce resolution number two thousand seventeen dash thirteen by short title only.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen by short title only.
Have a motion, second and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Confirming resolution number two thousand seventeen dash thirteen, short title, resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which confirms the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the application of ABCinemas Inc., which confirms the granting of tax abatements for real estate and for personal property, which confirms a waiver of noncompliance with ICE six one point one, twelve point one three, and ICE six one point one, twelve point one, four point five, as permitted under ICE six one point one, twelve point one three.
I'll make a motion to approve of resolution twenty seventeen dash thirteen.
Say, have a motion and a second for approval of resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Was that the third reading?
No.
Has copy? Just one copy?
We can make photocopies. Yeah, I think so.
For everyone to sign. So that's it?
The only other thing is this will be scheduled for approval as well by the Redevelopment Commission. That will come up at the first meeting, first Wednesday in October, so, but I anticipate that that won't be an issue. I think most people are very supportive of what you're doing.
Oh, just, Corey's asking that they need to be here for that.
If somebody wants to be present at the Redevelopment Commission meeting just to speak briefly about the project and explain the purpose of the abatement, that's fine. If you don't want to be there, I can cover it. That's up to you.
I can be right there.
Okay.
And Audra, if you don't want to wait around, we can get you the paperwork tomorrow. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. We're good to go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, let's do this event forum so that Brad can get out of here. The Cherry Lane residents want to have a block party. The event date is October 1st. Primary location is between fourteen oh three Cherry Lane and fifteen fifty Cherry Lane. Event will start at 1:00 PM, end roughly eight or nine PM. Thirty to forty residents of the neighborhood planning to attend. Really about the only thing they are going to do out of the ordinary is they're going to have a little bouncy house there, it looks like. No special need for restrooms or anything like that, and Brad Ingalls here to represent the Cherry Lane residents. He's had Greg, Jim from the fire department, and Jeremy from the street department all sign this, so I think we're all good to go, and it looks like they're going to have a block party as long as you will-- I'm sorry, what's the date? The date of it was October 1st.
It's on my calendar. I'll make a motion to approve the event forum for Cherry Lane Block Party.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Approved block party for Cherry Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. You're good to go, Brad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Winston, sorry, Emerson Brown. And Emerson is going to kind of brief us this evening regarding the status of the signage that he'll be placing on the new nature preserve trail, the St. Mary's Nature Preserve, which he is assisting in constructing and installing as part of his Boy Scout Eagle Service project. So, it's pretty exciting, I think, Emerson, as far as the nature preserve in and of itself is really cool. If anybody's not been back there yet, it's really, really awesome. And Emerson has stepped up and going to help construct signage throughout the trails, and I think he wants to kind of brief us as to how they might look and what they might include. So go ahead.
I just wanted to first start off by thanking you all for giving me the opportunity to do this and help you with this project. Especially Mr. Koshaw for giving me the kind of insight into how I could make my way into this project. Currently, I am working with landscape architect Mr. Kevin McCrory and Melissa Norby as well to kind of make the plan for how the signs are going to be manufactured, funded, and eventually go into the ground. I have a map of the site plan, and there are five signs that will be put in. The main trailhead sign, and then four others in good locations where the nature kind of breaks up and there's something new and interesting to talk about. The sign company that we are thinking about going with is up in Fort Wayne called Baldes Sign Company, and they have yet to be contacted along with an environmentalist, but I hope to get in contact with someone from the Limberloss Wabole Swamp down in Geneva. This is some of the work that the Baldes Sign Company has made, and these are kind of what the signs are ideally going to look like. Something like that would be more for the trailhead signs. You can see with the two posts in the ground and the bigger display board. Something like this is going to be more of what you're going to see just out in the trail. And each sign is going to be uniform in the way that it's set up, and it's going to have a little map along the side showing you where you are in the preserve as well as a little reference of sponsorship down at the bottom. And speaking of sponsorship, five sponsors for each sign, Abbot Memorial Hospital, Miller Berry &amp; Brown, Fleming Excavating, Don Ray's, and First Merchants Bank. Are there any questions so far?
I got a comment. As a young man, I was an Eagle Scout, you know, changed the pantry at a church by making some shelves so they could put different canned goods on it. This young man has demonstrated his efforts. He's worked with an architectural firm and engineering firm. He's talking to naturalists to get the wording on the sign. He's talked to sponsors, and you've given PowerPoint presentations to these sponsors and got the money?
Yes.
See, this is a little farther down the road than a sixteen, fifteen-year-old guy that's going for his Eagle project. I want to commend you, Emerson, for your job well, well done beyond all my frame. Thanks for being responsible, young man. Excellent. All I can say is congratulations and thank you. Thank you on behalf of the city for all the effort you're putting into this, and it's really going to add to the trail once it's all completed. Do you have any kind of a timetable as to when this might-- I mean, will it happen yet this fall or will it be next spring or--
We're hoping to have everything in this fall. I've kind of been pushing the environmentalist yet this year, especially in the next couple weeks before the cold weather kind of makes all the floor and fauna go vacant in the area, so--
I don't want to push you to have it done that quick. I think, you know, whenever you're ready--
The original timetable to have this project done would have been sometime around now to late October, but just due to some kind of slow-moving period of time, it might be spring or next year at the very latest.
That's fine. Whenever it is, it's going to really add to the whole project. I mean, the project right now is really cool, just as it is, but once we actually get the, you know, everything planted and growing and--
Right.
The things that you can actually identify, then that's-- there's no hurry. I mean, if it doesn't happen until next summer sometime, and we want it to be done, and I know you'll do it right, so. Thank you so much, and Jeremy and Julie Murray, thank you for helping them out here and making this happen. All right, thanks, Emerson.
Thank you.
Well done, Emerson. Okay, next up, I have our two thousand eighteen salary ordinance, which this evening we will introduce and go through two readings, with the final reading being at our council meeting October 3rd. And Phyllis, do you know what number this is?
Ten, isn't it?
Yes, I have five. Wendy gave me ten.
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 But I think it's for something else, correct?
Yeah, it's for the water system.
This is the salary ordinance. I had number five written up here. Does that make sense to you?
No. Okay. No, we're up to ten, but I think ten has the water bomb for number ten.
Yeah, so this would be eleven.
Okay, so we'll do eleven first here. And do you have--
This is the original--
Salary ordinance.
Okay, so this is the salary ordinance for two thousand eighteen for the employees of the city of Decatur. Like I said, I would ask that we have a motion to introduce it for its first and second reading and pass those accordingly, and then table it for its third reading at October 3rd.
Okay. I'll make a motion to place the salary ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand seventeen dash eleven at its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash eleven, short title, ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the city of Decatur, Indiana after the year two thousand eighteen.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance, salary ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven on its first reading, yes.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash eleven at its first reading. Roll call vote?
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wylie Stewart.
Yes. I'll make a motion to place salary ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand seventeen dash eleven at its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash eleven, short title, ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the city of Decatur, Indiana after the year two thousand eighteen.
I'll make a motion now to pass ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven on its second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash eleven at its second reading. Roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wylie Stewart.
Yes. I'll make a motion now to table or salary ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven for its third reading on our next city council meeting, which is October 3rd.
Say, have a motion and a second to table ordinance two thousand seventeen dash eleven for its third reading and passage at our next council meeting on October 3rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. While we're in the mood to do ordinances, Tim, I think you have a water rate ordinance that we also need to introduce. If you could kind of brief us on that one?
We're working with Crow Horwath, which is our financial advisor regarding a rate study. In the course of doing the study, they realized that when we adopted ordinance two thousand-- what was it, two thousand sixteen dash nine, which was last year, we raised rates fifteen percent at that time, but the-- it didn't include everything that should have been raised at that time. Specifically, fire hydrants, monthly fire protection, municipal drinking fountains, and private fire protection were omitted, so we need to increase those rates as well to be consistent. And Crow Horwath requests that we get that done before they finalize their rate study. So this is the ordinance that does that. It's minimal rate increases for residents. It increases their rates by thirty cents for probably the vast majority of people. I'd say probably ninety-five percent of properties. But there are private fire protection services where they have major connections, probably for sprinkling systems, and those are higher prices than they were to begin with, so it's a fifteen percent increase for these categories that were omitted back in two thousand sixteen. So this is ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten, and I've entertained a motion to introduce it for first reading.
Before we introduce it, are there any comments or questions? If not--
I'll make a motion then to place ordinance twenty seventeen dash ten on its first reading by short title only.
Have a motion to place ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten at its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended racing charges for the use of and the service rendered by the Decatur Water System.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty seventeen dash ten on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten at its first reading. Roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wylie Stewart.
Yes. I'll make a motion now to place ordinance twenty seventeen dash ten on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand seventeen dash ten at its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended racing charges for the use of and service rendered by the Decatur Water System.
I'll make a motion now to pass ordinance twenty seventeen dash ten on its second reading--
Because you have to have a public hearing. Second. Have a motion and a second to-- where are we at? Passage? To pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash ten at its second reading. Roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulham-Camp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wylie Stewart.
Yes. Now, I'll make a motion to table ordinance twenty seventeen dash ten for its third reading for our October 3rd city council meeting.
Take a motion and a second to table ordinance two thousand seventeen dash ten for passage at our October 3rd meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same.
We also need to schedule a public hearing on this before adoption on third and final reading because it is a rate increase. So if we can have a motion to--
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance twenty seventeen dash ten before its third and final reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. That's everything actually on the agenda. It's only eight o'clock, Bob. I do have some-- a couple of things to report. I need to ask council for you to give me authorization. The little building down here at the end of the alley that is on Madison Street, it's currently owned by the Logan Brothers. It's a building that we've all kind of talked a little bit about in sidebars, whatever, about going along with our plaza. It'd be an ideal spot. It's right in the middle of the plaza. Be a good building for the city to own. We could use it for storage. You know, like, for example, if there's a function going on, or if there's not a function going on and the bollards aren't out, the bollards could be stored in there. It could also serve as public restrooms for any time we have events down there. Not saying that we can afford it, nor would we be able to buy it or anything, but I would like to ask council to authorize and make it okay for me to talk to the Logan Brothers about this property. Do you need a motion?
I would, yeah. I would agree, though. I think it's pride location for our-- what were our purpose with the festivals, and restrooms are definitely needed for those types of events, so you want to make the motion?
I can hear, I'll make a motion that we give our mayor, Ken Meyer, permission to look at that building. Second. Matt's nodding his head with a second over there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Other than that, the only thing I will report, we've had some rain yesterday, had more rain today. I'm not sure what they got done out on US 224, but the last meeting we had, which was a week ago, the projected conclusion or end of the project was the week of October 9th, so it gives me great joy to say that we're inside the last month. We're down to weeks now rather than months for this long project that's been going on for some nine and a half months so far. With that, mayor, if I can, I just want to thank the police again for Kevin Gerber directing traffic in the mornings. Just this morning in the pouring rain, they got a semi pulled over at the corner of Pickway and--
I was going to make the same comment. I was in line--
Very frustrating, but the police are dealing with it the best they can, and we appreciate the extra effort.
Yeah, I was in line trying to get over to the solid waste board meeting this morning and got in that traffic, and Officer Gerber was there with all of his rain gear and doing a phenomenal job keeping traffic moving, and this semi is in the middle of everything and--
We'll all be glad when it's--
Yeah.
I shared this with Greg, but that same semi, I had to take my grandson to the middle school this morning, so I was in the-- I got held up also, and I was late. I was actually late for the solid waste meeting. I left my house turned by the old PD and headed down Fifth Street going south, and I see a semi on Fifth Street stopped by the Methodist Church, and lo and behold, he turned east. He turned left, so I'm thinking, well, this is going to be great. I bet I'll see him when I pick up my grandson and head out that way, and sure enough, he was out there. Soon as I came around the curve, it was bumper to bumper all the way back to the curve, but the semi, I don't know if Officer Gerber called someone to come out there or how they did it, but--
I don't know whether they did this morning or not, but he does do that.
Yeah, I believe he did, because I did see him on his radio when he was-- and he had the semi. It was just stopped and--
Yeah, I think you must have told him, hey, you going up to the next intersection, turn right and just sit there, because then finally, by the time I got up there--
The police officer, he timed it so the police officer came in from the middle school, and then he released the semi heading east, and the police car followed that semi.
There you go. Regardless, I'm glad they got him. That's all I have as far as my report. Tim, do you have anything before we go to the department heads? Yeah. Tim has nothing. Bob, this is--
Um--
Bob?
I'll ask you a question.
Yeah.
Plane commission--
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one thing. Thank you. Yeah. Forgot. What was you going to do?
We need to make it matter of record. Plane commission is making a recommendation to rezone property at the request of Jackie Jargie. This is a property that's down on Seventh Street. It's a cone property recently sold for auction. There's three parcels there that are to be rezoned from I-1 to R-2 Mola family. Recommendation is by plane commission that that be rezoned as requested. I need you to make this matter of record, and I'll present a zoning ordinance at the next meeting.
So moved. Did she indicate what they plan to do there?
They're planning on putting up a storage building with living space as well, and then when Jackie's father moves there in a couple of years, which she thinks he's going to have to. Her daughter is coming back and is probably going to build on a separate lot next to live there. She currently is a student. She works at Parkview, wants to come back to Decatur, and that's where she wants to build a house.
Any comments? Is this right next to the fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You're looking for this to make this matter of record?
Make it matter of record.
So moved. Motion and a second to make this decision by the plane commission a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. Anything else?
Um...
Phyllis?
I love the coat, or not the coat, it's our employee handbook.
Our employee handbook, at the last meeting I brought this up to council, and you suggested that we show it to the department heads, and I have had comments from police, fire, building planning, sewage, and Melissa, I had her review it, she had some, so there's several things that they wanna look at, so we're not prepared to go any further than that. Did, have the council, have any of you had a chance to review it?
I've looked through it and looked through, we did, I think, Les Markle, he sent us some of his comments.
Right.
Saw that.
But what I think we would like to do is, were there any other comments on it? Yeah, I'll tell you what, you really have to kind of read it line by line to actually find the things, but there are, there are some issues with it, and we want to, Phyllis and I and Wendy wanna run all those issues by New Focus HR, the people that prepared this for us. Once they've done that, then we'll bring it back to council for adoption and passage of it. So you need a recommendation to table it, or do you... No, I'm just giving your report right now, that we're not ready, we wanna continue talks with New Focus HR, and then we'll bring it back, so. Greg, you got anything?
Um, the only thing I wanted to let the council know was, today we got a nice surprise, Sergeant Mark Cook, he had been in touch with his OPO coordinator...
You wanna tell us what OPO is? Okay, Operation Pullover.
And through one of their grants, we had received about $4,900 worth of portable rut test instruments, and thousands of mouthpieces and testing equipment for it, so it was a preview, so he did a nice job on that.
Yep, good job, Mark. Thanks, Greg. Jim?
Nothing.
Done.
Uh, we got the derivative hanging on nature preserve this week.
That is Thursday at 5:00 PM, okay?
Like, yeah, right there.
Yep, yep.
Uh, North Adams is supposed to start breaking ground next week, uh, I think they'll find out through their contractor, it's for that. Wendy's is about two weeks' fine schedule, but they allowed themselves five months total, they said ninety days, and they started out two weeks' fine schedule, and we have one with the gas line issue.
Okay.
Before that.
Jeremy?
Heavy trash is here and gone for 2017, it was, oh, not on track, there was days that was younger than others, so it's a nice service that we provided the community. October the 6th will be the last day for yard waste collection, a lot of due to the upcoming league season starting shortly after. Other than that, everything's going pretty well. Over the next week to ten days, we will be continuing patching asphalt, there's many utility patches in the city that we've got, a piece of the land is the last time and on the dryer days, getting it ready, mudding up for winter. Monday, we will close Madison Street between First and Second, looking at print code to start preparing for a big project that will last eight, nine months.
Just what we need, another eight to nine month project, right? Jeremy, while I got you up here, Jeremy and I have been talking, Jeremy's probably the biggest, busiest guy in Decatur this, this year. I asked him about Washington Street, and I asked him about First Street back here, where we made so many cuts for the, the water lines, and, and I asked him when that would be permanently repaved, and it will not be this fall. He wants to let more settling take place, he, they will patch back here with, with asphalt, but then they wanna let more settling take place, so Washington and First Street between Monroe going south won't get, it's permanent resurfacing until next spring.
I'd really like to see us open First Street whenever that time comes for the resurfacing, to see long-term what we'd like to do, you know, if we have a long-term plan or a short-term, if you will, you know, before we go through and resurface that, that whole territory.
And you're kind of referring to it being on the riverfront and what may take place there, whatever?
Correct, because, you know, with the resurfacing, you're, you're looking at a good chunk of money to resurface all that, and just thinking, we need to think ahead a little bit, is what we want, long-term, long-term, it's what we invest a lot in, in terms.
Yep. And then lastly, with Jeremy, he's also been working on a layout or engineer's design for Hannah Nutman Park, reconfiguration of the ball diamonds out there, and that's coming along real well. He's also working with the park board on a layout for an aquatics park, and they're moving right along. Now, both of those projects are projects that are future projects, there's no set time for them, but I do think that the Hannah Nutman project would be the first one up. I think the community will really buy into that project, anyone, everyone's had a family member that's played ball out there at one point in time, so it would not only make it nicer for the playing itself, but much, much, much safer, and much better for, much better experience because of the restrooms, et cetera, et cetera, so I think we'll be ready probably to show everybody the plans on that in, within the next couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, four inches being ready with the plans.
Yes.
The last couple of years, we worked with Brett Knorr from Knorr Land Surveying, he has some pretty extensive experience looking at ball fields.
He did Monroe?
At the college level, and at the high school level, and then just these smaller ball works, he's been ready to work with. I believe I had a final conversation with him this evening on what you and I talked about, what's some of the gentleman's parking, just some little things that had to work out, and he will actually get something down on the boards so we can show, you know, what our plan is, and then be working towards an engineer's estimate for construction. It is a very exciting project, I've had numerous, numerous, numerous people approach me, hey, when are you gonna get started out there? You know, we need to do something. He explained to me, you know, it's gonna take a long time, it's gonna take a little money. I really do feel that the community's in support of doing something out there, so I don't think it's gonna be a real big problem raising funding. Through some different fundraising events and such to make this happen, I think it's really, really exciting.
Yep. Thanks, Jeremy. Ann?
Nothing.
Kevin?
Nothing.
Now, if Melissa says nothing, I'm gonna encourage her to, to give a little, a good news report.
I have a patronicity report. Earlier this week, the Belma High School class of 2002 was here to present a check to the mayor for the Madison Street project for $2,075. Again, the class of 2002, they had 35 donors, and 17 of those donors were out of state, so a great thanks to them, and they rallied to come together and do this community project.
The whole thing's kind of...
Very, very appreciative.
The whole thing was kind of brought together because this is their 15-year class reunion, and one of the classmates saw the piece in the newspaper about, I can't remember what class that was from Decatur High School, that, I mean, went back in the like late 50s or something, that came together and, 58, yeah, and they made a donation as a class, and one of the class members from the class of 2002, they had a Facebook page to invite a hundred and some people that they had Facebook page contacts with to their reunion, and one of the people on there suggested, hey, we ought to all chip in and give the patronicity, and 35 donors later, we got the check today for $2,075.
Our current total right now is $64,728. We have 133 donors, and we have until Friday, it's the last day of the year.
And the 133 donors, did you say?
133, it's really more because, like you said, of those two classes that he's given to give. We're probably pushing 300, 200-ish...
Oh, at least, yeah, I think, yeah. So, that's, that's awesome, so, thank you, everyone from Decatur that's given, and reminder that you have through Friday to keep giving.
$64,000 doesn't include the $2,000, do you mind?
It does.
It does, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Melissa. Comments from council members?
I just got a couple of comments to say, we switched the, with the Highland Games, sorry, from the chambers perspective, my pardon.
That's okay.
We're, we're gonna keep all of the activities during the day and the night in the Riverside Field, and we're just gonna use the Riverside parking and the chamber for parking, so that's just a little bit of a switch in the event, and we're gonna have a safe ride home. Been working, I want to say thank you to the police, fire, county, and EMA, we've got an emergency action plan that, you know, I really wasn't counting on, but we talked about it and came up with, and we've got one more meeting tomorrow on that. Also like to thank the, Jeremy and the guys at the city, or the people at the city, for putting up our banners and, and publicizing this thing, it should be a really cool deal, and it's gonna happen October 7th at 11:30. Hope, hope that you can join. If we do get rained out, we'll just do it the next day on Sunday.
I think it'll be a fun event.
Oh, the other thing is, is Corey Cox will be playing this Thursday afternoon or evening at 7:00, right down here on Madison Street on the north side of the courthouse, so if you can, come on down, it'll be another great show. It'll be our final one for the summer concert series.
Thank you. Any other comments, council, Phyllis, Tim?
Um, next meeting will be our public hearing for budget.
Okay, thank you.
So we have two public hearings.
And we should always... Yeah, at least two.
We do.
Motion pay the claims? Not yet. Anything from the, from the public?
Oh, I just had a quick question, does Media Common have an exclusive for cable service in Decatur TV?
We have franchise.
They had franchise at one time, but I don't know that that applies anymore.
How do we find out if that's valid or not? FCC?
I, I can check, we, they, we negotiated something with them a couple of years ago, but, but the, I don't think that they work on franchises anymore, it's more a matter of whether somebody else wants to come in and...
Well, their bill says franchise fee on it.
Yeah, there's a franchise fee, they're required to pay that, as are other providers that provide...
FAF does.
Is that all their money, or is it good at the camp?
3% comes to, 3% of your bill.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not just Media Common is charged that, anybody that provides media services, whether it's...
The only other one that does in Decatur is TV Fiber Source, and they pay 3%.
Are they TV or cell?
They're...
Internet.
Yeah.
Just internet, alright. So there's only one system in Decatur that carries this TV service?
Cable.
Correct.
Unless you go to DirecTV or DISH.
But they don't have to pay.
It's like that one.
Right.
Okay.
It's free on the antenna.
Okay, motion pay the claims? I have a motion to pay the claims, go ahead with the second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn. And I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same, thank you very much. We adjourn. See you, Bob.
Jeff?
That was a program.